Tonight with us to speak in invocation on behalf of Sellout Fellowship, we have Elder Craig Elliott.
Good evening. Appreciate being here. If you would stand and ask blessing of the evening tonight. Father Devon, we are so grateful for this opportunity tonight to be able to come here and to participate in these proceedings, to be able to have the privilege and the right and the responsibility to come and to practice in the session here, to make decisions on behalf of the people here as duly elected members of the City Council here of Perry. I thank you for each and every member that is here to participate in this and forgiving of their time. Father, we just pray that you would give each and every one of us wisdom and guidance, that we would act in accordance with your word, Father, and the decisions that we make, we'd be just and fair, that our attitudes would be those of compassion and kindness. Father, I just pray this in these times as we look around our country and see the division that's going on and the unrest and stuff, that Father, you would just allow us to be an example of doing things well and doing things right, Father. I thank you for the people who are involved in our city and those who have come tonight and to listen and to take an interest in these proceedings. Father, I just pray that through all this, good decisions would be made and that we'd be honored to you. I thank you for all that you do on our behalf, the way that you work and guide and direct this. In your shoo's name.
Elder, thank you for your service. You're welcome to take your seat. Time is now seven o'clock and I will call order this regular meeting of the Perry City Council from November 5th, 2020. Would everyone please rise and join me in saying, "I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undeniably, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. Everyone make your seat. Devon, would you please call for...
Kennedy Petrow.
Here.
Craig Elliott.
Here.
Mindy Galvaby.
Here.
Brian Brass.
Here.
Christopher Powell. Terry Wood.
Here.
Mayor James Hublitt.
Here.
All of the counterculture except Councilmember Christopher Powell.
Very good. I find that a quarter in this present, we may conduct business. First item is the approval of the agenda. The clerk and I have prepared the agenda and to the best of our knowledge, it has all matters of business that may come before council tonight, and I submit it to you for your approval or your amendment.
I move that the agenda be adopted as printed.
Second.
Moved by Elliott, seconded by Brass, that the agenda be adopted as printed. Is there discussion on the agenda? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Our next item is the reading and approval of the minutes. Devon, would you please read the minutes of the October 15th, 2020 regular meeting?
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading and approve the minutes from the October 15th regular meeting.
Second.
Moved by the trial, seconded by Elliott, that we suspend the rules, waive the reading and approve the minutes from the October 15th, 2020 regular meeting. Do council members have any objections to waiving the rules? Hearing none. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please vote no. Motion carries. We move now to pre-approved reports and presentations. I have no pre-approved reports tonight. Is that correct, Devon?
No, I'm not.
Then we will go to our first session of public comment. Our first public comment is now, and we allow a second session of public comment later in the meeting under any other business may come before council. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person in each section. Would anybody joining us with Twitter like to address the council at this time? So please raise your hand. Any comments from Zoom?
No.
Did I say Twitter?
You did.
Okay, I meant Zoom. No public comment from Zoom? Would anyone here with a slide like to address the council at this time? Seeing no public comment, we will move to communications. Devon, do you have any communications for council tonight?
I do. I gave you correspondence. It is emergency order, MCL 333 dot 2253 gatherings and face mask order from the Department of Health and Human Services. I bring this up because it's an extension of all of the rules that have been put in place of our gatherings. Nothing has changed according to the way we've been doing them currently. It's just an extension. There is no expiration date on this one. It just says, "This order is effective immediately except for Section 8C, which takes effect November 2nd. This order remains in effect until rescinded," is how they worded that one. So you have a copy of the full order, and I thought it was important that you had a copy of it. The other part that I gave you is a correspondence. It comes from Miller and Camfield, and it's the law firm that MML uses, which we are connected to. And I just want to let you know that the Open Meetings Act amendment allowing electronic public meetings has also been extended and changed according to our legislation. I just want to note that the way we have proceeded with our Zoom meetings is effective exactly the way we've been doing them until December 31st of 2020. But the Open Meetings Act in this law also states from January 1st, 2020 to December 31st of 2000, I'm sorry, January 1st, 2021 to December 31st, 2021, there are going to be stipulations whether a Zoom meeting is appropriate as we've been doing, or a remote meeting, of course. Public bodies may only meet remotely under the following circumstances requiring accommodation of absent members due to military duty, a medical condition, the open meeting is amended if you find a medical condition as an illness, injury, disability, or other health-related condition, a statewide or local state of emergency or state of disaster declared pursuant to law or charter by the governor or a local official or local governing body, and meaning how the person would risk the personal health or safety of members of the public or the public body. And so I just highlight those items. It's about a four-page document, and again, I thought it was important that you had a copy and were aware of this. And that's all I have for correspondence tonight.
Thank you, Devon. Any questions for the clerk? Then we'll move to mayor and department head reports. I'll go with my report first. Under Perry City Charter, provides that prior to the gabbling end of the next session of the regular meeting, the mayor may exercise a veto on any ordinance or resolution passed at the previous meeting, and may at that time explain the reasons for the veto. I am reporting to council that I exercised a veto on Resolution 15, 10152006, the Winter Party Resolution. My reasons are that when I came in... Welcome, Mr. Powell. I'll pause while you get a chance to take your seat.
I'm sorry?
I said, "I'm going to pause what I'm saying until you have a chance to take your seat." Welcome.
Apologize, everybody. I came into City Hall to do some work on the morning of October 16th, and I got an earful from city staff regarding the motion. The problem is not simply one of our creation. This was simply the straw that finally broke the camel's back. And while the city staff had not taken the opportunity to address me on this over several years, they have a tremendous number of complaints about how the city government has conducted the annual Christmas party. The responsibility for this does not fall on this council alone, but stretches back 20 years through a series of mayors and city council members. And over that time, I have been as guilty as anybody regarding this. I asked the staff for their input so that I could have a clear understanding of what their feelings were. The most striking feeling that I got was one city staff member who said to me, "I'm here 40 hours or more a week, every week. If you think I'm going to bring my spouse in here to sit down and have punch and cookies with you, you're out of your mind." And I can appreciate the thought process behind that. So the staff put some thought into it, and one of the members wrote a note for me that several other members said was the best expression of what the problem was. So the note reads as follows: "What do I want for Christmas? The annual City of Perry Christmas party employee appreciation has evolved and diminished over the past several years in this to becoming a social gathering for anyone and everyone with little appreciation expressed for the employees. Employees have never minded organizing the event. However, lately, they have had very little input, do all the work, organize, set up, clean up, and receive no things. It is merely another workday for them. It began with employees not being able to select the food for the event. They do, however, solicit for the gathering, solicit for and gather the bids for catering, then submit it to council, which decides which caterer will be hired and what the menu will be. Lately, it was reduced to being a local restaurant, which is okay, but has very little options. An employee is always available after working a full day to meet the caterer so they can get everything set up. The event is always held at City Hall and several other people, non-employees, have been added to the guest list. The community room and lobby is decorated by employees. It should also be noted that DPW spends their time setting up all the tables and chairs. An office employee mails all the invitations, keeps track of the RSVPs, and stays in contact with caterers so they know how many people to expect. The gift exchange is also organized by employees, and when all the fun is done, all the guests leave, and you guessed it, the employees are responsible for cleanup. And now, the name of the event has been changed to Winter Party. Of course, the employees had no input. It is the employees' Christmas party, and taking Christ out of the event makes it seem insignificant and not important. It does, in my opinion, serve as a good summary of feelings expressed to me by staff. I take what they've said to me seriously, and I am repentant from my part in this. I have been part of the problem in this. And so what I asked the staff to do after I vetoed the resolution was to work on the kind of Christmas party that they would like. How would it work if we addressed their concerns so that it does become what I think it should be, an expression of appreciation for what they do for us? They have prepared that, and it's before you tonight in a motion for your consideration. I took one other step. I went out on my initiative, and I purchased a gift card sufficient for each employee in the city to get one, and there's a motion before you tonight to accept the donation. If council has any questions for me on my report, I'm prepared to answer.
Okay. Would clerk have a report for council tonight?
Election was wonderful. I'm sorry to feel normal. Okay, yeah. Yeah, well, okay. So I'm a little on the goofy side for lack of sleep yet, but we've opened the door for new election inspectors and had them trained. And of course, I always have my veterans that have hung on, and it was incredible. I didn't know what we were going to walk into on Tuesday with just the atmosphere of the voters even. We had our concerns and reservations. I wasn't worried about our workers. They're really good people. But the newbies rocked it out. My veterans rocked it out. Took us until, I think we were about 20 after 9 before we officially had everything through the tabulator, and we balanced the penny first time. Now, we ran into some issues, but that again was due to, at that point, we were looking at about 15 hours or about 12 hours of work, and one of my best workers, her and I just were a little dyslexic on our numbers. But once we got our eyes back, everything balanced and everything went great. I don't know my exact count because people were constantly registering vote upstairs. I had Shirley in place. She rocked it out for me upstairs and was continually doing the job that I've been trying to train her to be able to do. I believe we're close to 1,600 registered voters, but don't quote me on that. And our voting total came at 1159. It's the highest percentage I've seen Perry in my history, and I've been doing elections since 2007. So City of Perry ran smooth. The people were smooth. I only had two people that I had to remind them that they couldn't bring anything politically that they were wearing down, and they were respectful. They meant no harm. It was just a piece of material on them. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, workers. Thank you, City of Perry voters for being good through all of this.
Devon, do you realize how awesome you are? As a leader, you trained everybody that's been doing the elections for the past 15 years. You're like, you're butter. You are butter.
Thank you. Well, it takes them... The greatest thing is that I've worked really hard on them, and they don't know it, that if something would happen with me, they could do it. But I tend to play the position of a bouncer of any problems or questions so everything runs smoothly. So to make them look even better is all I tried to do, and they did. They looked great.
I'm very sincere. I think you are the best thing I have in the city. You really are.
Any other questions for the clerk? Chief Box, do you have a report for council tonight?
I do. Okay. Since my last report, we have conducted our annual firearms certification. It's recorded by the state, but we do a little bit more than that. Obviously, we don't do the bare minimum. So we got that completed. And then in addition to that, about a month later, we did an annual night shoot, which is fairly unique. We come together as a county and a lot of so helps organize it at the sheriff's department range. And so we did two weeks' worth of that to get everybody through. I'm going to say we probably had 40 or more officers go through that throughout the county. And I just talked with a retired Inglewood County deputy who participated in that, and he said it's the first time he's ever shot a gun at night in training before. He applauded us in putting that on and organizing that, and said it went well, and he appreciated that. So I'm glad that we do that, and we do do that on a fairly regular basis. Actually, I think the last four years annually, we have conducted that. So good to have that back, or that out of the way. It goes till about 10 o'clock at night. We are looking to do our annual use of force review and go over our policies. Just saw that the president signed an executive order adding some criteria to that, so I'll be looking at that tomorrow and seeing what we need to add. We'll be doing that in December. And, oh, just completed my lean audit, which lean stands for Law Enforcement Information Network, and that's all the awesome information I have about everybody. And that would be access. And it's mainly for officer safety, but it contains all of our warrant information, driving history, all of that. And it's quite the process to maintain our department with the criteria that the state police hands down, but that all comes from the FBI and their standards. So every three years, there's a three-year cycle that you have to go through, I'm sorry, that is completed within. But that cycle for us was the end of one cycle and the beginning of another, so it wasn't quite three years. So hopefully, we're at the end of the next cycle. But I figured, I sent our lean auditor somewhere around 600 pages worth of documentation to verify that we're doing everything appropriately. And I walked out of the audit, walked out of my office, which they're doing remote audits now, with a list of five things, three of which were completed and updated before I walked out of the office that day. So it went really well. It just is a long process, and it absorbed pretty much all of my administrative time for a month and a half or so. And then also, we have been utilizing the Milo Training Scenario Shooting Range up at Baker College. Back in February, I became an instructor for that range, and I've been able to take our Perry PD officers up there and go through the training. And to me, it has way more value than putting holes through paper, and it comes down to decision-making and what you're capable of doing, and how you react to the stream, and how you adapt to the scenario as it changes in front of you. So that has been a huge asset, and I'm really grateful that Baker has that available to us. And as the law enforcement representative on the 911 Board for Shawaussee County, I just wanted to thank everyone who came out to vote, but I am especially grateful for the passage of the 911 surcharge renewal, and it does get passed in such a way that I believe that everyone saw that as a renewal, we didn't increase any prices or costs on your monthly cellphone bills. We just simply needed to renew what we had in place already. And that went well, and that will afford many more projects for us to complete to keep everyone communicating safely in Shawaussee County. That's the end of my report. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Yeah, Chief Box, I appreciate your service to our community, and I know that sometimes being a law enforcement officer is difficult, especially in days like today. Thankfully, we are in Perry, so we don't deal with everything that goes on, let me see, around the country. But with that being said, I do know that there are some things that do arise at times. Just for example, I know here a year, year and a half ago or so, you were involved with capturing the man who shot some police officer out of Saginaw, I believe it was, and you were instrumental in apprehending this individual. Does the Perry Police Department have everything they need to ensure officer safety, resources, training, body cams, whatever they need to ensure not only that they are safe and free to do their job, but as well, anything else that they may need?
Why, I could shoot myself in the foot right now and say, "Yeah, worlds." We really are, quite honestly. I mentioned, given last, I think, at least ten council meetings ago, that we're looking to update our TASER. The TASER we have is, boy, I know it's well over a decade old, and the technology is antiquated in it. It still functions. There's no reason to believe at this point that it would not function to ensure the safety of the officer and the person who it is being used on. But that being said, the technology has grown leaps and bounds in that last 10 years, and we are looking to update that. But I do have the money and the budget to do that early. So it's just a matter of me finalizing some numbers with the company and bringing that to presenting.
Just a quick question on the way that you said that. So you said the TASER. Does that mean that you guys just have a TASER that you're sharing, or does every officer have a non-legal form of weaponry assigned to them?
We all have pepper spray. But as far as the TASER goes, since we normally have one officer working at a time, we only have one TASER that's in service.
Is that preferable, or just to accommodate and make it work?
You know what? It's a little bit of both, quite honestly. I really don't see the need at this point. On day shift, if I'm responding to a call, I'm usually the assisting officer. So the officer working the day shift is the primary officer, and they have the TASER. So, and quite frankly, I've never been in a situation where I felt the need for two tasers in one situation. But that being said, if we had overlapping cars, overlapping shifts, I would definitely feel the need that each of those officers would have their own TASER.
That makes sense. I've watched you guys take somebody in my dry side driveway, so it's necessary.
They are quite effective, I will admit. Anything else?
Just a quick comment I'll share with council. It's quite a process that the chief goes through to get that lean audit. I've seen all the paperwork, and because of the mayor's access to various parts of City Hall, the mayor has to be fingerprinted for that purpose. All the officers have been fingerprinted as well. But I got to go up there one night and see the place where people go in if they're on their way to jail. And I'd like to reassure Mayor-elect Hammond that the sheriff and his deputies will be very nice to you when it's surf time to get fingerprinted, whatever that calls.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you, Chief.
DPW Superintendent John Soder, do you have a report for council tonight?
As everyone knows, all these collections are in full swing. I just want to encourage, if I may, residents to get out while the weather is pleasant and get stuff to the edge of the street. We're continuing to pick up bags and finish up the month with some chipping. It's just random days. It's not a set day. I met with MDOT's grant administrator and the engineer for Wolverine Engineering to discuss the moving forward with the Pagan Grant, so I have all that information. Some loose timing schedules starting in January. We'll put the bids out as time progresses. The good thing is, we've made multiple water and sewer connections in the last month, including Kentucky Fried Chicken on Lansing Road. So that's in. The building's, as everyone can see, it's moving along. I don't know at what stage. I guess they'll open in the spring. So that's pretty much what I have.
Any questions for the superintendent? Thank you, John.
Thank you.
I'll let council know that for confidential medical reasons, I've excused the treasurer from tonight's meeting, and I wish you the best. Just a comment, I appreciate council's comments on the department heads. They have been a real asset. I would not have been able to be half the mayor that I was able to without the support. The clerk, I've always said, is the mayor's right hand, but the chief of police is effectively the mayor's eyes and the right fist when he needs one, and the DPW superintendent is effectively the mayor's legs. I mean, how would we get around without them taking care of our road toll? So I'm glad council, for counsel's recognition, and I just wanted to say a few words about how valuable they have been and how much I appreciate their service and the expertise they bring. So that will move us to committee reports. Do council members have any committee reports tonight? Genevieve, would you like to talk about the pension committee?
Mindy, are you going to try to talk about?
Mindy?
I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared with anything.
I thought you were going to say I wasn't listening.
Well, the pension committee, I got a little lost in time, and so I failed to make the meeting, but John on the committee did his work, and I think with the encouragement of Mayor Protem, they moved things forward despite my absence, and Pension Committee recommended the proposed pensions, so they're before you tonight. And I just wanted to give the two that were there to do the work, since I wasn't in opportunity to speak if you had anything you wanted to say on that subject. If you don't, then we can deal with things under business.
No, I think my comment would be that the group that came together, they were very focused. were very focused, they were very interested in what John had to present. He brought us a lot of information. We had good representation from, from the city. Mindy put in a lot of work as well and that those who were in attendance felt very confident in presenting this resolution to the council for your reconsideration.
Thank you.
I think they did an excellent job researching and coming up with everything that they did and I feel confident that it's a good.
That is, John. I dedicated that to him. I want him to give all credit. He did all of the work on that.
He did. Put in some overtime on that.
Thank you. Any other committee reports tonight? Hearing none, that'll take us to presentation and approval of the bills. Councils had the opportunity to review their bills and we seek your permission to pay them.
I moved that we approved the bill that's presented in our hearing.
Moved by, oh, sorry.
Second.
Moved by Petrell, seconded by Owl. To approve the bills as presented and that payment be authorized. Is there a discussion on the bills? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. That will move us to old business. Our first item of old business is discussion, possible amendment to council rules and procedures.
One thing I'll say on this, I'm willing to concede on the issue, however, a couple of things I would say to council to make them aware. One, I'm not walking back and off on this issue because I think of an issue of our right to ask for an opinion from the attorney. The presence of this council has been, at least at one time, it's not an issue of spending money. There was an issue at one point in time, this council, any individual member could go and get an attorney opinion. So the issue here is not the issue of expense. Now, I am fiscally conservative, so I certainly don't want us to just be able to run off and just run up tons of legal fees. However, but the idea that it is restricted because it costs money, well, that's, that's not the case because the presence of council has been in the past and if they need a legal opinion, they can get it as an individual. Now, I understand the rules and proceedings are different now and that's fine. The second thing I'd like to say to council is I would encourage all of you to read the Opens Meeting Act because I, I am concerned that, that, that piece of legislation is acting more like a muzzle, more so than what it's supposed to be. It is, it is put in, it is a act that's, that's put in place to create accountability for each one of us and all of us should want that anyway. I have no problem discussing publicly the things I've discussed with any one of you privately. And that's what the Opens Meeting Act is about, is that we don't hide from the public and have meetings. That doesn't mean we're not going to run into each other at the store or something like that and something's going to come up, we may as well discuss it. There's no violation there. And so this idea that getting into where there is an opinion of three people asking for an opinion violates the Opens Meeting Act, I think is, is, is not accurate. So I would encourage each one of us to, to read that act and make sure we're familiar with it and, and, and help ourselves not be muzzled by it, but understand that it's an issue of accountability to the public, which is not a big deal. So that being said, I'm willing to concede unless somebody else wants to argue, then I'll vote with you.
Other comments and discussions? Does council want to remove this from its agenda?
I move that we remove it from the agenda.
Motion to table indefinitely?
Motion to table indefinitely.
Is there a second? Move by Grass, seconded by Petrell, to table indefinitely discussion and possible amendment of council rules and procedures. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. That'll move us to new business. Our first item is possible resolution adoption of 401 retirement. John, did you have anything you wanted to say on this subject? If you, if you don't, I'll open up for council to discuss and they can certainly ask you questions, but I wanted to give you the opportunity to have your first word.
That would probably be best.
Very good. So this is the first of the motions that, with the pension committee, came back with a positive recommendation. How would council like to proceed? Floor is open for discussions, questions, motions?
Nobody has any questions?
I will move, I will make a motion. I move that we accept and adopt the resolution recommended by the pension committee, which moves the current city employee 401 retirement plan from AIG VAIC to ICMA-RC.
Second.
Moved by Petrell, seconded by Gelbubey, that we accept and adopt the resolution recommended by the pension committee, which moves the current employee pension 401 retirement plan from AIG valid to ICMA-RC. Is there discussion?
No, thank you, John. Again.
Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please vote no. Motion carries. This next motion is the second part to the retirement plan change. I'll open up the floor for questions, discussions, and motions.
I move that we accept and adopt the resolution recommended by the pension committee, which moves the current city employee 457 deferred comp plan from AIG VAIC to ICMA-RC.
Second.
Moved by Gelbubey, seconded by Petrell, to accept and adopt the resolution recommended by the pension committee, which moves the current employee, the city employee 457 deferred comp plan from AIG valid to ICMA-RC. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. That will move us to possible amendment of parks and recreation facility use policy. Devon, did you have a report for this on council?
I do. Is there anybody who has reviewed the policy that I gave you a copy of? What you're going to find, the only change of the policy that I am recommending is underneath the rules, there's an additional restroom use rules. A couple of reasons why this has come up. One, we ran into a situation, John can quote me, in what year, maybe it's been two years, maybe three years now, we might be going on a third year, that we were, we were not allowed to leave the restrooms unlocked at all times due to, unfortunately, we thought it would be okay with our police department nearby. There were undescribable things done in the bathroom. So, couple of things. So the restrooms are locked. If somebody decides to actually rent the pavilion, then it was a key issue and due to the police department being on call, they didn't want to be responsible and not be available to be able to open the restrooms for an event. And the, and the DPW, even though they're on call on the weekends, again, they're limited, they're not here all the time. So it was decided to have a restroom key. They would go with the, the use of the bathrooms. So then, due to, we had our situation now where we can't rent the community room, so then we ran into a different situation and somebody said they were going to rent the pavilion and they got the key. We were allowed to give them the key because we didn't really have it in a policy. We were just making it convenient and they, they didn't need us anymore because it's a first come, first served. You don't reserve it. They just got there early, didn't pay the money to do the pavilion and got the use of the bathroom with nothing. So after talking with Shirley, which she deals mostly with the public of the rentals that goes on, and talking with John through the DPW and what they've done, you'll see that there is a restroom use rules. And just basics, the, when you signed out the key, a lot of these rules were already on that sign-out sheet anyways. So now it's just in policy and we've included it. And so they'll be filling out application if they want the key instead. So it's just going to follow the same format of renting the pavilion. And then we also put a fee because if you think you can get there early enough and not want the pavilion, you could actually reserve the restroom and just be at the, you know, have an event in the yard and just have the use of it. We're finding, another thing that's happened during the days, a decision was made with our situation again today. We usually open up the bathrooms out there while office hours are open. That would mean us maintaining and cleaning to make it COVID okay. So the decision was to keep it locked. So as, on top of it, you'll see on the agenda, along with this policy, we've created fees and I've given you the fee schedule and you'll notice, just in parentheses is what we've added for this feature, so it can be taken off. And if you don't agree and you wanted a policy, you can, but I believe it's temporary. Is what it states is during regular hours, we've had people, we have a, there's lots of people that are using our pavilion just for lunch to meet because it's an outdoor gathering, but we have some ladies and some, half of them are from Lansing and Grand Rapids. This is our halfway and they sit here for hours. And so they can use the bathroom now, in parentheses is what it says, you're allowed to have the key, give us your driver's license. When you return your driver's license, you can have your key back, instead of doing the charge and having them fill out to actually apply for the pavilion or anything like that. And again, we're trying to be proactive with the situation and be responsible, you know. We now have a, a person that is cleaning our building, not only cleaning our building, but also maintaining our restrooms on a regular basis, filling, so the labor on that. So you'll see a minimal cost, $10 to have the key. So if you decide just to do the restroom, you can have the key. We do have situations where somebody will have baseball and softball all year long, through the whole summer season. We believe in that situation, it would still apply to just the bathroom acceptance key, they're just being responsible for it of no, no fee. They're just maintaining it at that time. This is just on a rental, a personal level. So if you have an organization that is doing an event all summer long, I think Mr. Elliott was in that situation, this doesn't really apply to that situation. And again, if we feel that needs to be policy, fine, but again, that one's working, so we're not messing with that one. This is more on a individual basis that's coming in and they're finding loopholes and just ways of not communicating. We don't know who's in there. We, you know, again, it was terrible that, that the DPW had to retort that somebody had feces and junk just all over the place. So it's a way to, to make somebody responsible. And so I hope you agree with what I've given you and the fee schedule. And yes, you have to pay a $25 deposit to rent the pavilion and the key. I was questioned on that and I said, now that you could actually do it separate and not have it, 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 both are separate items, separate types of facilities to be able to use with the city for different circumstances, so.
Just a question on that. If someone is renting the pavilion, can someone else rent the restrooms? What I'm questioning that is if the person here is renting the pavilion and someone outside rents the restrooms and then does the damage, is the person who rented the pavilion going to be responsible for that?
Whoever is on the pavilion, if that happens, yeah, it could happen. But that's the thing that we tell anybody, we tell somebody with the community, doing the community building, you rent this, and it's happened is why I'm, I'm giving this example. You rent this one, you open that door to let somebody in and the second level is open and people notice that, that are out playing outside. And they've done stuff to the second level in the bathrooms. And so we have told people that when you rent it, yeah, we have to have somebody responsible. We can't maintain it. So if you rent the restrooms and somebody else is using them, you need to keep an eye on it or lock it. You have to keep. You could be the one that could lock that door if that's all you have is the restrooms.
What I'm saying though is if someone rents the pavilion, can, can we say that you can't have a second roof renting that just the bathrooms that are outside, just the pavilion would take test instance, to keep something like that from happening where you'd have two people having access to the, two different roofs having access?
Sure, there would be common sense in it, yes. 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 Because the person with the pavilion would get the option of wanting the bathrooms or not wanting them.
Yeah, I was thinking of that precedent.
Yes. I really don't think that's going to happen, but you're right, it could. You never know. You never know. But yeah, we always think about the overall picture of what's going on and usually they go together, but now they're not. And everybody's looking to save a penny and we were like, okay, so you use the one that uses the most energy, the most products and you did want to rent the pavilion. Okay. We can do that. So if you would like me to work a little bit more on it or if you would like some time to review it, there is no rush on this. This is something that actually was office talk and it got brought up again and I'm like, oh my goodness, I need to try to work on this. So it might not be complete tonight if you would like this to be, no action taken and have an opinion and review it next time, honestly.
It seems fairly straightforward. You're just trying to prevent damage to the bathroom by people leaving a security deposit?
No. I want, you had presented a couple of different scenarios, so for the people who come from Grand Rapids and need here, the bathroom is open for them or would they need to rent the key?
So what I put in parentheses is if it's during city office hours, eight to four, and those ladies would, would come and they would like, it's just the driver's license.
Got it, got it.
Because we are there, you know, and what are they going to do? They need the driver's license to go home. So we just didn't want to have to make it as complicated for them, but you know, John made a point, you give them the key, what's to say, they, it's their convenience and they just take off with it, you know?
No, that's what I thought I understood and you made it clear. I just want to make sure that I got there.
And so I thought that was a good idea to, a quick trade.
Well, if it keeps it tidier, why not?
I move that we amend the parks and recreation facility use policy as presented by the city clerk.
Second.
Moved by Doggy, seconded by Grass, that we amend the parks and recreation facility use policy as presented by the city clerk. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. I'll open up discussion for the next part of this, which is the possible amendment to the fee schedule. Floor is open for council discussion, questions, and motions.
I move that we accept and approve the following resolution resolved that the city of Perry established the following fees and deposits to be charged for the use of the city of Perry Parks and Recreation restroom facilities, effective for all persons using the center after November 5th, 2020. Park restroom key fees will be, you know, then cleaning fees of $10 and security deposit of $25.
Second. Moved by Grass, seconded by Gelbubey. She, that is resolved, or we accept and approve the following resolution resolved that the city of Perry established and the following fees and deposits be charged for the use of the city of Perry Parks and Recreation restroom facilities, effective for all persons using the center after November 5th, 2020. Park restroom fee fees, cleaning supplies fee, $10, security deposit $25. Is there discussion?
Okay, just one more question, Devon, on that. So I get the person is, like the ones from Grand Rapids and stuff are using it and they put in their license during the day, do they also have to pay the $10 fee for the use?
No, because nor, what I'm going to do is I'm going to eliminate that parentheses items because our general rule is, is that those restrooms are open, eight to four, Monday through Friday, when we are open.
So the, the fees then would mostly be for, on the weekends?
Yep. Any kind of reservation or anything like that. We just thought it would be. We just thought it, it would be practical. I mean, we're having to clean the building up more just because again, it's a, uh, they're going to the corner, they're getting food and they're using our pavilion, they love it, we, we are getting, I mean, it's half packed of people of all different, we, we get groups of men from their work and come in with their lunches, it's a, it's a regular gathering. All, you know, I'm, I'm expecting them to say, you know, put sides on, it is getting cold and they don't yet.
Would it be wise still with groups like that to still have them to pay the fee though since they're a large group using the power supply and stuff for the city?
The opinion was is for ten dollars and as much as they're coming in for lunches that for ten dollars, they'll walk away with the key and.
I'm not saying give them the key, do the, still do the driver's license for them during the day, but, but still the fee for use during that time?
Uh, no, because nobody is asked, so I just did that parentheses if it did come up. Um, but again, if, if that is the case, um if you feel that, that strongly, we can enforce it with them, but the general consensus, these ladies right now, they're not asking for a key, they know we're open, they're using our bathroom, quite frankly. And they're being COVID safe, they don't, they don't dare come in, they, they take their turns coming in, they wear their masks and we don't oblige them. I just use it as example of the distance because I, there, there is so much that I'm, I'm like, so what are you ladies doing? I mean, they get there at like noon and they leave right before we leave at four. I mean, they're, they bring their lawn chairs, they start with lunch and then they're in a lawn, just the cutest ladies you've ever seen, there's about six of them, along with all other types of groups that are showing up. So it was just an example and it was a thought process that if you were questioned through the situation of offering something for, if, if they would feel more comfortable with not bugging us and being out there, but um if we might never even be asked, so it was thinking out of the box.
Very good, thank you.
Other discussion?
Uh, I got one Devon, for as far as the, the ball fields, baseball softball fields.
Yep.
Summer rugby?
Yep.
Is that going to be a fee for the team for getting the field to practice?
That has its own rules and that, that has not changed. So as long as they can prove a nonprofit, there is no charge to it. And most organizations like that are, they have a corporation of nonprofit and they have not been charged. So none of that has changed. And what's happened in the past is that they will set up dates of practice and games with Shirley through the whole season and then we post, so um the teams aren't fighting over the field, everybody knows when, what they can do. And then there is one person that is responsible for the key for games and such, and they know that they either allow each person one at a time to come in because the whole public then is allowed to use them and that if there is any damage, they are responsible of taking care of it. And is that, has been a big asset to make that one person with that key during that season to take care of it. And so that system works, so we don't, we really don't want to break that and inconvenience that, we want to help them and make that a good thing.
All right.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please vote no. Motion carries. That'll take us to the next item of business, which is mayor's appointments. I have two appointments for you tonight. My first appointment is I reappoint Mike Tobias as our representative to the Community District Library Board for a term to expire in December of twenty twenty-one. This is a reappointment, I believe Mike has been doing a good job for us there and so I'd like to keep him in that job and I submit the appointment to council for your advice and consent.
Consent.
I didn't have that motion for the mayor, so you just have to kind of maybe duplicate the one that I did and just with a different name and date and.
Thank you.
I move that we accept the mayor's appointment of Mike Tobias to the uh Community District Library Board uh for a term to expire summer twenty twenty-one.
December twenty-one.
December twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Moved by Grass, seconded by Elliott, to accept the mayor's appointment of Mike Tobias to the Community District Library Board for a term to expire in December of twenty twenty-one. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. That'll move us to the next appointment, which I announced to council at last meeting to give you a chance to think about it before I make it. And uh I, I take the position that this is an appropriate appointment to make because it is an unpaid position. And so we have a vacant seat of the two that we hold on the SADA board and I appoint James Huglitt, myself, to the SADA board for a term expiring in October of twenty twenty-two and I submit the appointment to you for your advice and consent.
I move that we accept the mayor's appointment of James Huglitt to the SADA board for a term expiring October twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Moved by Elliott, seconded by Grass, to accept the mayor's appointment of James Huglitt to the SADA board for a term expiring in October of twenty twenty-two. Is there discussion?
Other than thank you.
My pleasure, I was going to say, are there any objections? Please note that anybody who objects will be appointed to the SADA board.
You can't read my lips?
We can't, you're a risk, we don't want to get. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. That will move us to the possible approval of a city Christmas party for the benefit of the employees. So the employees have put together a proposal that addresses several of their key concerns. It is a proposal to approve a Christmas party, limiting the um guest list to those who serve the city, city staff, certain former retired employees, appointed and elected officials, which was the initial group that was included in that process before we began to add some others into it. And uh they have done some searching and they have found a facility available at Berkshire, which will provide them with adequate, adequate space, a clean and friendly environment and relieve the staff of setup and teardown duties. So I propose that we give a Christmas party to the city staff that they will appreciate and I believe it address the concerns um related to health and safety as this is a public facility that is serving meals and uh doesn't put it on the staff to try and keep this place going down for COVID purposes. I'll open the floor up for questions, discussion, motions, whatever counts as clear.
Um, my, my discussion I guess would be, would be to thank you there for being open to that feedback and bringing it to the council, um so that we also have a chance to reflect on that. So um it's easy to look at doing our own work of others' perspective, so I appreciate the staff members who came forward to tell us what they need and that you've given us the opportunity to do so.
Yes, yes, yes.
And I'll say on my behalf, go ahead maybe.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I, I still have concerns about large group gathering due to COVID. Is the facility bigger than this is, this, this room?
It's golf course, built like in the back.
It is at Berkshire, yeah, it is a golf course. Personally, I haven't been there in years, but they can, they say that they um, we gave them a total of forty and they said they could be compliant to the rules of that are having people inside. They will be serving us, so again, that is one of the rules that if you have a gathering, you're supposed to be sitting, staying put, not, you know, just, you know, roaming around the whole time and, and stuff like that. I will admit, the first motion, it was just kind to get established of how we go forward. It's um if, if council would have just still agreed that maybe dinner's not a good idea this year, that's understandable, um but it was a little bit more than just that too for us. So um Shirley is not here and like I said, I don't know if any of us, uh, have you guys been to Berkshire to define her space, because I have not to say.
It's a little bit longer than you.
Yeah, so. And I was there with, at a wedding and it was packed, I mean, we were, I mean, it was a big wedding, so.
And if they're going to be doing the serving.
Yep.
That will make a difference as well.
Okay, yes, it's not a buffet, you're going to actually get three choices of a dinner. So you get a menu when you sit down and you'll get three choices of them, of a menu and a cash bar, um so that's an, an out, extra option that's for you and hors d'oeuvres will be cash, um you, so you, if you want to get, um, I'm sorry, not hors d'oeuvres, appetizers is also going to be on the menu, but that'll be out of, out of pocket, out of your cost, so. A little unique way, but it was a lot of thought process put into it and that's where we come up with the idea of off-site, but totally respected if it maybe shouldn't happen today, you know, in, in this year. I get that if that's just an overall consensus too.
But.
No harm done, Shirley has the information of, of if um locked in but could cancel if possible, we knew that it was on the table, that it just might not happen this year.
So it's not a requirement of any city employee or elected or appointed official that they must attend and so if they feel, they can use their own self judgment to determine their.
Yes, that is true.
Whether they would like to attend or not.
It would go as same as planned, um city staff would still get the invites out to all people and, and monitor and to get that count into them. She, uh, you, you did get the memo from her, it wasn't the only place. The majority of the places that she called, our group isn't big enough for them, do you even consider doing our party? So that was a factor in looking in that, but, but like I said, we, um, this is what we come up with, with, um, we all appreciate you and we all believe that you need to be thanked through this too. And we just didn't, didn't put it out on the table of, of how it got away from us, we just were doing it for you and that's the way we feel is we're doing it for you now, so that's.
One thing I'd say is too, uh, this is something I just found out as this issue came up here recently, so on my part, I certainly apologize to the staff because that's not the way it should be. And for whether it be the, the cleaning up or whatever the issue uh may be, uh that's been arisen of this and certainly uh the concern about the, the naming of it being Christmas, I, I, uh, on behalf of the council, I certainly would say apologize for that because whether we uh religiously celebrate Christmas or celebrate it as a cultural thing like much of America does, I see no reason to certainly erase the cultural heritage of our nation. Um, and so uh if you guys are comfortable coming with, I, I, I've moved that uh we approve the annual employee appreciation Christmas dinner to be hosted off-site by city hall on the first day, uh, on the first Friday of December and coordinated by city staff, which will include current employees, retired employees, appointed officials and elected officials as of the first Tuesday uh after the first Monday in November, uh plus an adult guest.
I second that.
Moved by Grass, seconded by Powell, to approve an annual employee appreciation Christmas party to be hosted off-site at city hall on the first Friday of December and coordinated by city staff, which will include current employees, retired employees, appointed officials and elected officials as of the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November, plus an adult guest. Is there further discussion?
May I add to that? That, that complication was to just to define and not that it has happened thankfully while I have been, but if there's ever an election that is kind of ugly, it defines elected, you know, beginning and end on that situation and how the date was. And also note that Shirley gave you a memo that actually contradicts the date, but due to COVID, dates are limited, so it's actually the following Friday. But in general rule, we've usually had it always the first Friday of December and so again, the work of the motion is kind of going forward.
Thanks, thanks very much for your question.
Further discussion?
Uh, one thing I'll further say too on this Devon, if you guys have issues with something like this we're doing, you have an open line of communication, I'd be more than glad to erase things at the council, so feel free to share those thoughts, the whole city staff, all of you. I mean, uh, you know, our job, our goal is not to make your job harder, but uh make it easier and when we try to express appreciation, really make it that, so.
You guys are just too good at being thoughtful. You're too good.
Well, you know, it, it was one thing at a time, so we would grumble and go, whatever, we'll do it. And then something else would change, whatever, we'll do it. And then just, um, this time for some reason, it just went, okay, I, I don't know. And then it just took.
It's about time.
And we all, we all had an opinion about all different things and again, it's about people that aren't even here anymore. You know, that have put stuff in place, so the mayor is right, it's, it's not about even necessarily anybody that is here that where, where things have started.
Sometimes we just need a wake up.
I'm glad it was brought up.
Yeah.
I'm really glad that, that it was brought up in the office, so thank you. Tell Shirley, thank you for all her hard work.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. And I want to personally say thank you to council for taking the time to listen and appreciate the employees' concern and allowing me an opportunity to correct what's been my failing for several years. I'm glad to, as I exit this position, to correct something that I didn't even realize I was doing wrong. And I appreciate the city employees having enough confidence to bring this to my attention, that I would listen and that I would be fair. I, I've always wanted to be that kind of a leader for them and, and I appreciate that they had the confidence to take a hard thing and bring it up with me, say the hard things that need to see get my attention. Thank you.
Appreciate your reaction.
This will take us to the last item of new business, open up the second to the last, possible approval, let's see, no.
We have to pay for the.
There's a second motion, if they consider for the actual dinner, I'm sorry. I thought it was two different items.
I knew that we authorized Shirley Smith to make payment to Berkshire Restaurant, not to exceed twenty-four dollars and twenty per cent per person with an added twenty per cent gratuity of the grand total.
Second.
Moved by Patrell, seconded by Grass, to authorize Shirley Smith to make payment to Berkshire Restaurant to not, or not to not, to exceed, not to exceed twenty-four twenty-four per person with an added twenty per cent gratuity of the grand total. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. That does take us to our last item of new business. So what I have here to express my appreciation of all of these years of the work that the city staff has done, is I have one twenty-five dollar gift card to Johnny B's for each city employee. Donations cannot be accepted without council's approval, so I seek your approval and if you give the approval, I'll hand these to the clerk and the mayor-elect, as she will be in office at the time of the Christmas party, will be able to distribute these.
I move that we accept and approve the following resolution, it is resolved, whereas the mayor has extended a donation of gift cards for each city employee pursuant to the Perry City Code Section two ten point zero four, said donation will be accepted by mayor and council.
Second.
Moved by Grass, seconded by Patrell. It is resolved, whereas mayor has extended donation of a gift, of gift cards for each city employee pursuant to Perry Code Six, Section two ten point zero four, said donation will be accepted by mayor and council. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. That will take us to any other business that may become before council. This is our second opportunity for members of the public to address council. Would any of uh the members of the public joining us by Zoom like to address council at this time? time? Would any of the members of the public with us in person tonight like to address council at this time? Seeing no public comment, I'll ask council if there are any other items of business that need to come up for your decision tonight.
Can I bring up one subject?
Is it an item of business?
It might be for council. It's both, um.
I re, I re-listened to your, to the meet, last meeting, and to me, it was very vague, because to me, Santa Claus has been there way before Christmas fantasy. You agreed that no Christmas fantasy. Is it a definite no for Santa Claus, or is there stipulations of protecting him and making a conversation protected at all? Because one of the comments I had, I had heard was, is that without Christmas fantasy, we won't have the traffic. They show, they, they, the same amount of kids show up before Christmas fantasy as they do now. The library is considering available. They haven't definitely told us yes or no. The pavilion could, might be fit in a situation. And I, I couldn't tell Dory definitely no, because Santa Claus is part of Christmas fantasy, but Santa Claus has always been Santa Claus. We used to have him twice a day, actually. We had different forms, but we've hosted Santa Claus forever. So I'm bringing this to you, to, can, can you tell me a yes or no, and maybe even form it in a motion if you would like, or just a all agree yes or all agree no?
Does, does Santa Claus, does he have a system to set up to keep his up?
No, we would be setting it up for him. We as a city would figure something out, but we don't have anything in place.
Okay.
Yes.
I'd like to see it happen. It's for the kids, it's been a tough year for them. Trick or treating was great. The leaves were picked up nice on Halloween. It was the town of Borges. It was really, beats up for the kids real fast, so. I, I, I would like to have Mrs. Claus show up.
If you'd like to put it in the form of a motion, Mr. Powell, I would suggest that you make a motion to authorize the city staff to pursue bringing Santa Claus.
Like to move authorization of the city staff to inquire and, inquire about Santa Claus and a, a safe way to keep him protected. Or the fantasy Christmas? Is that what this is still?
That, that has already been canceled. Because that was due to not being, the, the overall consensus, reason why it was voted no, was because it'd be too difficult in the, in the climate of going in and out of the businesses to be able to keep it a safe environment due to our situation. And, and, and I respect that. I even respect the Santa situation, but I just felt it was kind of a lingering conversation. And again, some of us being new on this council, Santa was, was its own thing, always way before this. And we, our, our elves that hope Santa, the count was, is the same as it was before Christmas fantasy. He defines himself. So I just, Dory looked at me, and I'm like, I don't know, I'll ask again, I just want to make sure. And I respect that you say no to it, to Santa Claus.
So we have a motion by Mr. Powell, is there a second?
If there's a way of making it safe, I would like to, I'd like to see it through.
Is there a second for Mr. Powell's motion?
Second.
Motion by Powell, as just stated, we'll get the wording from the recording, and seconded by Grass. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, do we want a roll call for this?
Yes.
Very good. Councilwoman Galberty?
Yes.
Councilwoman Contral?
No.
Councilman Elliott?
No.
Councilman Grass?
Yes.
Councilman Powell?
Yes.
Councilman Wood?
Yeah.
The vote is for yes, to no. Did I count that right?
You did.
Motion passes. I was waiting for Terry to vote no, and then I.
I was thinking.
I gave my second vote. The only vote I've gotten, but, but I respect it. You voted your opinion, Terry, and that's what councilman.
I might have understood that if, that it can't be done.
If they've done safe, then no.
Then don't do it.
I think that was condition of the authorization.
And that's kind of even with, with the communication that we briefly had between the McQueen house, and the McQueen house was, well, I gotta talk to my people, and the lighter was, well, I gotta talk to my people. They want it, they just don't know if they could even help provide it to make it safe. So I think we're all in agreement of that, but then I told Dory, why are we doing this work when I can't tell you what, what council really was saying to us?
I think we gotta be awful careful. If you watch the numbers, this stuff growing out there, growing, it's biking and getting worse. And so it just, you know, we have to be careful about what we do.
What we really want Santa Claus is to put him in a bubble and make him one of those snow globes, a, a human snow globe.
How cool.
Does, does anybody know who makes those? That's what we really want.
No, but that's a great idea.
We have so much fun with our ideas. Sorry.
Catch somebody who's a cop shower.
Yeah, exactly, yes, and they're totally pretty close, you can't even hit me. I couldn't see you.
Craig in a diaper on, maybe Christmas. That's a little mean. No, he gets comfortable because he looks so young.
What?
You don't want to know.
Are there any other items of business that you've come before council for your action tonight?
Chris, did you volunteer to be in a diaper? I might someday see that.
It's for the kids.
Hearing no other items of business, we will move to council discussions and observations. Councilwoman Contral.
Thank you for a peaceful, organized, and well-run election again. Thank you. It is wonderful to be, that, that we all could be part of the city because of the work they've done. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Galberty?
Same thing, again, and I have worked under her at elections. She doesn't even raise her voice. I'm telling you, she is just smooth.
The quieter I get, that's when he gets scared.
She's a, no matter what's going on, she's calm. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilman Elliott?
Third, what their comments were, and just the thanks to all of our staff for doing excellence in everything that they do, and the fact that the city runs smooth because of all the people, Don, Chief Fox, to hall ladies and the office, kudos to everybody.
Councilman Grass?
Just want to congratulate council-elect Lambert and council-elect Mr. Porter and mayor-elect Sue Hammond. Look forward to working with you guys, and so, congratulations. Thank you.
Councilman Powell?
It's a hard one to follow, the same. Well, you look good in this table here, to the same.
If you guys got Chris's personality.
Yeah. There. And just again, to everybody in the office, the, the whole city staff, but you, you ladies in the office are just incredible, and we need to thank you more. I just want you to know that we do appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
You're the glue that keeps it sticky. And Mr. Wood?
Councilman Wood?
No, I'm dead.
All right. Very good. So I share the sentiments of congratulations to those who were elected this time. I'll share just a piece of information, which is not any kind of a rule, but I don't know if council noticed, but when I set this up, I arranged you by seniority. So if you follow that tradition, Mr. Porter and Mr. Lambert would be at the seats where Genevieve and Mindy are. However, there's no requirement that council be seated in any particular order. It has been a longstanding tradition that the mayor arranges them, and then if council objects, they rearrange themselves. So just a little history, seating everybody by seniority is my particular predilection. I just like certain kinds of things, and, and I like to recognize in some way those who have served the longest. I often call council discussions and observations from least senior to most senior.
And it's getting close to you.
I kept you close to me because you're such a good guy, and I enjoy your company.
It's a great experience.
And thank you again to council for listening and giving me an opportunity to correct something that I had gotten wrong for a while. I appreciate that you guys were willing to take your part in the responsibility and correct something, which I hope will carry over to the next council, and I think there's a very good chance that the sentiments will stick and that the new council will, will share them. So with that, there's enough for me. We're moving to agenda items for the next meeting. Did we have anything left on this agenda?
I don't think so. Can you believe that?
Wow, we cleared the agenda. Okay, we will have presentation, the Perry Pride Awards at the next meeting. I went out this last Saturday before MSU demonstrated that they had finally learned to hang on to the football. And, and I took the neighborhoods that had not received their Perry Pride Awards, and I had nominated winners, and they've been invited, and Vic Darlin has graciously agreed to maintain his sponsorship of that, so we'll bring those winners in for the next meeting. And it is my hope, though there's certainly no requirement for it, that the council members elect, re-elected council members, and the mayor-elect will join us for the next meeting. I've always enjoyed, what I hope has become a tradition, of new members taking their oath of office here at a public meeting, so there's an opportunity for members of the public to be able to watch it or see the recording of it. And so I, I don't think I've had a chance to talk to Bob about that, but I extend that invitation and hope that we'll get to see all of you at the next meeting. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.